Okay. Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and reconvene the special meeting of Folsom City Council for Tuesday, January 24th, 2017. Any final action to report out a closed session, Mr. City Attorney?
No final action.
All right. Thank you, Steve. So with that, we will adjourn the special meeting and convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, January 24th, 2017. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Howell?
Yes.
Micklos?
Here.
Sheldon?
Here.
Gaylord?
Here.
And Morin?
Here. And with that, would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So any agenda updates to announce this evening, Mr. City Attorney?
Nonchalant, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Very good. So with that, underscheduled presentations is the mayor's State of the City address. And this is done annually, and it is all of us who have served as mayor, it's always a privilege to talk about Folsom. It's always difficult to talk about Folsom in shorter periods of time. Like, I'm trying to keep this inside of 20 minutes, just to make sure we maintain even my own attentions, my own short attention span. But it is a privilege to do this, and for this reason, we always try and make sure that our meeting is very short on these evenings. So all we have after the State of the City is business from the floor and some consent calendar items. So we should be out of here, and I don't know what the poll is on when we'll be adjourning this evening, but it won't be long. So with that, again, I'm hoping for about 20 minutes here, and it is. It's neat to talk about the great things in this community and in our plans as well. So with that, I'll start with, "Good evening, everyone. It is always a sincere pleasure of mine as mayor to address you today and share our current state of the city. This is my fifth time doing this, and for those that know me well, understand that this makes five times I've had to abandon my casual clothing preference and dig deep into the closet and decide which of the few ties I was going to wear today, so I went with the gold here today. So my intent today is to bring you a succinct 20-minute or so update on what has made our city great, our year in review, and some plans for the years ahead. First, I love historical context. Folsom indeed has a colorful and cherished past. Caretakers of the preservation and appreciation of our history have fortunately been active for many decades, so thanks to the Folsom Historical Society and Folsom History Museum. This past year, Folsom celebrated the 160th anniversary of its founding and the 70th anniversary of its incorporation. Founded in 1856, we voted to incorporate in 1946. Always a fiercely independent community, the Folsom residents of that era envisioned the long-term value of self-determined local control. Folsom became a general-law incorporated city, abiding by state legislative enactments. Folsom, since then, we have had a city council and a city manager, so since 1946. Just as importantly, but less visible in our history, was the 1990 public vote to adopt our independent governance charter in an effort to improve our council-manager form of government and further enhance local control opportunities. Because of these past efforts to build the very best in local government, Folsom is ideally positioned with a charter that proactively minimizes governance instability and with a solid structure of council-manager checks and balances, is resilient to crisis, and most importantly encourages citizen participation. It is comforting for me to feel confidently that the foundation of good government in place today will ensure Folsom's continued success beyond the great folks in our community today. As a city council member since 2002, I have a deep appreciation for the work of our past councils. All of us serving on our city council today understand this and makes our mission simple. Don't wreck the great work handed to us by past councils and parlay that positive momentum into even brighter prospects for Folsom. Thank you to all of our past council members, and thank you to Steve, our council member since 1994, Carrie, city council member since 1998, Ernie, council member since 2008 on his third term, and Roger Gaylord, just recently elected in November. One additional note is to recognize the exceptional participation and time commitment of council members that council members spend representing Folsom on numerous regional boards, committees, and commissions. And just to mention a few of those, Steve has served on the Sacramento Area Council of Governments for many years, representing Folsom very well. And Ernie, I know participates in the Folsom Eldorado JPA and also our Folsom Cordova School District, City of Folsom Two-by-Two meetings. Carrie's represented us on a lot of things over the years, currently on the Sacramento Transportation Authority and recently Regional Sanitation. Roger, have you had a meeting yet, Roger?
Thursday.
A Thursday, Roger's first meeting with the Sacramento Air Quality Management Board. And myself, I serve on the Regional Transit Board and now Regional Sanitation as well. So this is work that a lot of people don't see, and I figured it's a good time to kind of express how busy we are, even outside our fair city of Folsom here. And one note, I've gotten a question on this, is being on the Regional Transit Board, we had a devastating electrical accident on our lines that have closed two of our light rail stations. That should be fixed within about a month, so please bear with repairs there, and we'll get that up and running. Folsom works best with an efficient, professional city government, great schools, and a vibrant business community. We currently benefit from all three, and all three of these interests actively support each other. Folsom consistently rates among the best cities for jobs, affordability, prosperity, growth, and family friendliness. Our state of the city cannot be discussed without some recognition of our schools and business community. We have a vested interest in each other's success and we willingly assist each other's efforts as partners. I truly believe that when the schools, businesses, and city government are operating with each other at peak efficiency, a self-reinforcing cycle of support and improvement develops. The total does indeed become greater than the sum of the parts. Because of this, Folsom has recently been repeatedly recognized as one of the best places to work and live in California and the United States. So before I get to a direct review of our city governed and operated functions, I need to recognize these vital parts of our community that are guided separately but supported vigorously by Folsom City Hall. We know we can't have a great community without a variety of high-quality schools. Our largest educational presence is our public Folsom Cordova Unified School District. This includes nine elementary schools, two middle schools, and three high schools. My thanks to the Folsom Cordova Unified School District, their board includes Zach Ford, Ed Short, Chris Clark, Joanne Rankin, and Sarah Aquino. District Superintendent Debbie Betancourt, administrators, teachers, and parents who continue to contribute to these routinely highly-ranked schools right here in our community. The Mesurji School Construction Bond passed a few years ago is pouring millions of dollars into new and upgraded school facilities. Routine two-by-two meetings between the city and school district ensure our longstanding mutual assistance and information exchange. Our joint-use facilities agreement remains a model of cooperation and sharing resources to meet the demands of youth and adult recreation and education. Folsom Lake College continues to grow and prosper, serving thousands of college students every semester. The recently added athletic facilities complement the classrooms, lecture halls, and the Harris Center for the Arts, creating a vibrant educational and event center. Folsom is proud of this wonderful college campus. My thanks to the Los Rios Community College Board, Folsom Lake College President, and faculty for their careful stewardship of this fine institution of higher learning. Lastly, related to schools is recognition of the many small or private and charter school opportunities that complete the educational fabric in Folsom. There are many different educational needs in our community and is gratifying to acknowledge that most of those needs can be met right here in the city of Folsom. Another vital presence in Folsom's big-picture view is business. This is jobs, services, economic development, and just as importantly, the generous philanthropy of time and money from these businesses in our community. Spearheading these efforts is the Folsom Chamber of Commerce, the Folsom Tourism Bureau, and the Folsom Economic Development Corporation. From our largest employers to a sole proprietor, businesses that are here know they have a strong advocate in these organizations and businesses, and businesses that are considering a Folsom location need to see and feel this effective partnership with the city of Folsom. The Folsom Economic Development Corporation, or FedCorp as we call it, is great evidence of this, with business, chamber of commerce, tourism, city, and school representation. My thanks to the many years of great organizational leadership by Joe Galliardi, the Folsom Chamber of Commerce CEO, and Mary Ann MacLea, the Folsom Tourism Bureau Director. One last added amendment to my assertion of vital collaboration of separate but interdependent service missions in Folsom is the medical service role in public safety. The timeliness and quality of first response and subsequent medical services is always included in community rating metrics. From a 911 call to our Police Department Communication Center, to police and fire response, to emergency room nurse and physician triage, to hospital stays, and finally to general medical care, we benefit from having all of this available with exceptional quality directly in Folsom. Mercy Hospital and Dignity Health, along with Kaiser Medical Services and their plans for a future Kaiser Hospital, are a vital community presence that we do not take for granted. So with that brief initial mention of our city police and fire services, I'm going to use that as an ideal segue to discuss our city government services. As a full-service city government operation, our component of the Folsom Quality of Life Mission and our great local economy is to deliver a strong backbone of municipal services. We are a team of about 425 employees dedicated to high standards of service throughout our city departments, led by our city manager the past five years, Everett Palmer, that is respected locally and regionally. Thank you, Everett, for all your fine service. Everett is always the first to compliment the fine work of all our city employees. Many of our employees have been recognized for exceptional accomplishments by peers in their fields of expertise. I wish I had the time to recognize every one of our city employees, but I do want to recognize some of our senior staff who lead the day-to-day business of our city government. So our Assistant City Manager, Elaine Anderson, who I kidded the other day, does everything our city manager Everett Palmer doesn't feel like doing on a given day. Jim Francis, leading our budget folks and our human resources. Robert Goss, our Parks and Rec Director. Cindy Renaud, our Chief of Police. Dan Haverdy, our Chief of our Fire Department. Steve Wong, City Attorney. Krista Fremantle, right here next to me, our City Clerk. Marcus Yasataki, and he heads our water and environmental folks, handling our sewer conveyance as well. David Miller, our Community Development Director. David Nugent, our recently promoted Director of Public Works. And Lori Easterwood, our Library Manager, and Christine Brainard, our Communications Director. So that's just a small subset of this 425 employees at your service, and they are diligently working for you. We keep our neighborhoods safe with exceptional police and fire response and investigation. We build and maintain an award-winning network of trails and parks, including our popular zoo. We operate our own water, sewer, solid waste, and transit divisions with stable utility rates that have not risen in a number of years and do not include a utility user tax. We operate one of the busiest libraries in the region without a separate library tax. Equally important, we service thousands of requests for information and services individually from residents and businesses. Sound finances are the bedrock of any agency which strives to operate with greatest efficiency. If our financial house is not in order, our best-laid city operation and maintenance plans can fall short. We, as a council and staff, are diligent stewards of your tax and utility bill money. We return this money to you in the form of the greatest amount of service, maintenance, and capital expenditure a highly efficient agency can deliver. We continue the recent trend of increases in property tax, sales taxes, and vehicle tax, and hotel tax. While this is good news for our revenue, our budget approach remains conservative and cautious. Our unrestricted fund balance, after falling to a low of $4 million six years ago, is now above $11.5 million. This is the first time since 2007 that we are above our reserve policy of 15% of our general fund annual expenditures in reserve. So just to put that in perspective, for the last five years, we've put $1 million to $1.5 million in the bank for future emergencies. As our city manager likes to say, "We are building a community and not a balance sheet." So there is a balance to saving too much money. So there's a prudent amount of reserve that we maintain, but beyond that, we want to invest that back in the community. So in summary, our finances are stable. Credit rating is high. Our Department of Management and Budget guides over $150 million in annual expenditures with clarity and transparency. And our annual spending plans continue to balance expenditures across all our departments on a percentage basis very similar to spending plans for the past 50 years. So if you look back to see how we spent money in the city of Folsom back in the mid-1960s, you'd see similar percentages being spent on police, on fire, and on parks and recreation. So we think we've got that right balance, and we've tried to stick to that, so we don't spend too much or too little in any one area. This past year, we've replaced 11 police vehicles, one fire engine, two ambulances, one Vector truck, three solid waste trucks, and added three hybrid vehicles to our general use vehicle pool. These were all paid with cash and no financing. We expect this prudent pace of fleet replacement to continue during the next year on a pay-as-you-go basis with no financing. Earlier, I briefly touched on the importance of the Folsom Police and Fire Departments in our big-picture public safety network of service. We spend about $35 million a year in these departments, making sure they remain staffed with the very best and equipped with the very latest to serve our residents and businesses. Initiating most police and fire emergency response, our own, very own, 911 call center answered almost 98% of the hundreds of thousands of calls fielded within 10 seconds or less. Our Police Department is led by Chief Cynthia Renaud. Chief Renaud was just recently elected fourth Vice President to the International Association of Chiefs of Police. She will ultimately ascend to the presidency of this organization, representing over 27,000 law enforcement professionals in 100 countries. Reorganizations within our Police Department continue to fine-tune service to meet investigation and enforcement demands. Our Police Department continues to meet the increased challenges of bad laws that continue to reduce criminal penalties. The Folsom Police are respected by our community, and they have earned this respect because of their high level of training and, most of all, their personal compassion, and they are embraced by everybody in this community. Our four fire stations remain bustling operations, providing first response, rescue, and medical service. We are in the process of hiring a new fire chief and new firefighter paramedics after numerous end-of-the-year retirements. The Fire Department's paramedics are now using 11 newly-acquired cardiac monitors. These monitors will show the heart rhythm to the attending paramedic, as well as send the same heart rhythm images to the doctor at the emergency room, so they may better be prepared when we arrive. If a shock to the heart to help restore a heartbeat is needed, or the patient's heart needs pacing, they will do that. These versatile units also monitor oxygen levels in the blood to ensure interventions are most effective. And so this is example of a $400,000 expenditure that, again, is equipping our first responders and our Fire Department with really the very best that we can use today. Our citizens assisting public safety, or CAPS volunteers, as you'll hear them referred to, continue to grow and augment our police and fire services with thousands of service hours. This is just one area where we see so much strong, a strong spirit of volunteerism in the city of Folsom. Our park and trail amenities continue to grow. This year, completion of the Economy Family Park, the Zoo Barn, the Lake Natoma Access Trail, and the Johnny Cash Trail are expected. The California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation has been an instrumental partner in assisting with trail right-of-way on its property for the Johnny Cash Trail project. We appreciate our long cooperative history, working together with Folsom State Prison and California State Prison Sacramento. By the way, about one year from now, on January 13th, 2018, will mark the 50th anniversary of Johnny Cash's legendary concerts at Folsom Prison. The Folsom Public Library continues to be one of the best-used libraries in the state. The turnover rate of the library collection, which is the average number of times each item in the collection checks out each year, is over six times, third-highest average in the state and more than double the California nationwide average. This last fiscal year saw a 38% increase in ebook checkouts. Programming attendance was up 20%. 33,000 people attended 820 programs at our library. The Folsom community is also extremely supportive of its library, donating 5,000, almost 6,000 volunteer hours in the last fiscal year. So my thanks to the friends of the library for all the great work they do there. Volunteers help shelf books, help patrons in the 3D printing lab, and provide after-school tutoring and much more. We continue to aggressively invest in our water and sewer infrastructure. This past year, over $9 million was spent maintaining and upgrading water and sewer infrastructure. We maintain one of the lowest sewer spills per connection in the state. We used 25% less water in 2016 than our 2013 benchmark year. And to help create a little bit of context there, so three years after the benchmark year of 2013, even with some additional growth in the community, water usage was still 25% less, and that was after elimination of some of the mandatory conservation mandates set by the state of California. So I need to thank our community and businesses for that spirit of conservation and the long-term sustainability of our environment with those efforts. We continue to work hard to preserve and protect our 34,000 acre feet of annual water supply rights. This can get challenging with seemingly endless state water shortages threatening to make the temporary dry year reductions of water rights permanent. So we want to make sure what we've worked hard over decades to achieve here as far as our water rights portfolio is protected. Our growth area south of Highway 50 represents 3,600 acres of carefully planned development that includes 1,000 acres of preserved open space. This controlled growth is being meticulously managed, and depending on the variability of market conditions, will take many years to complete. By a way of comparison, our last major annexation was the similarly-sized 3,600 acres that include what is now Broadstone, the Parkway, and Empire Ranch. That was done in 1984 and is just now getting close to build-out. So I always like to cite that as an example of what we'll likely see the pace of growth there, south of Highway 50. Businesses or projects opened this past year or planned this year include the Fairfield Inn and Suites, McCooney, Sprouts, Lazy Dog Restaurant, Barnes &amp; Noble, Lifetime Fitness, Superior Self-Storage, The Commons at Prairie City, which is, I believe, a senior housing apartments, Peak Apartments, which I believe will be on Iron Point, up above Costco there, and Cornerstone Dental Center, Dick's Sporting Goods, and Nordstrom's Rack. We continue to carefully monitor and assist all of our business districts. So we have the Sutter Street Historic District, we have our Central Business District where Walmart is, and what we refer to as our Bidwell or Freeway Business District where the Palladio is. So we would like to make sure all of those continue their vital contributions, and not to forget our Folsom Boulevard folks there, where Iron Point and Blue Ravine come together with a bunch of vital businesses there as well. On Sutter Street, we expect one of the first buildings in the railroad block near the parking structure to begin construction this year. The Palladio Mall and nearby office and retail space continue to gradually fill. The Folsom Dam spillway project is just finishing up and projected to be operational within the year. This is the largest public works project in Folsom since the Folsom Dam construction in the 1950s. The U.S. Bureau of Reclamation and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers worked extremely hard to make sure the impacts to Folsom and Folsom Lake Crossing were minimized during this giant project. This new spillway will not only provide better downstream flood control, but also a slight increase in allowable early springtime storage, helping water supplies. About two years ago, work began to complete our first general plan update since 1988. Our general plan is the foundational land use document for the city of Folsom and includes goals, policies, and programs on a wide range of topics. This new general plan will respond to the trends of today, as well as those that may affect the city in the future. A preliminary public review draft was presented at our last council meeting, and I encourage input from anyone interested in this update to attend future public planning sessions. The final adoption of this very important document will not occur till later this year. So folks interested in becoming a part of that planning process are certainly encouraged to participate. We continue to enjoy many city-sponsored and privately-sponsored community events that can even bring international notoriety, like our hosting of the Stage Six Time Trial for the Amgen Tour of California Road Bike Race this past May. Folsom Live, the California International Marathon, the Folsom Blues Half Marathon, Folsom Pro Rodeo, Run With Nature, Veterans Day Parade, and the Easter Egg Hunt are just a few of our traditional happenings around town that are smoothly executed with the assistance of great organizations and volunteers. One of our newest events is our Community Service Day, conducted annually on the third Saturday of September. This past September brought together 2,500 volunteers tackling 40 service projects citywide. And I just want to point out, and I forgot to do this the other day, that was the genesis of our mayor at the time, Steve Micklos, working with our communications director at the time, Sue Ryan, and has just become a great tradition. So thanks for that great idea, Steve, and it continues to build and grow. This past September, after all those volunteers and 40 service projects, also included in that was the collection of donations of over 100,000 pounds of food for the beneficiaries of the great work of the Twin Lakes Food Bank. So please, this coming September, plan to join this effort to make Folsom great. With an improving economy, last page, everyone. So with an improving economy and some growth, we have all noticed traffic through and around town has been on the increase. In some ways, we are the victims of our own success with the promotion of retail commerce from throughout the region. The widening of Green Valley to the Eldorado County line is planned to begin this year, as well as other signal additions and timing improvements. Beginning the development of construction timeliness for an initial phase of a new free interchange is also a goal this year. We are certainly a number of years away from a new freeway interchange to relieve our current interchange congestion, but the pursuit of this relief will be an increasing priority. So as I conclude today, I have a few final thoughts. First, my thanks to my wife Kathy and family for their unconditional support of my time spent dedicated to city council obligations. And I can assure you, none of us up here on the council today would be here today if it wasn't for the support of our families and, you know, allowing us time to work for all the great things we do here in the city of Folsom. So please take time to thank all of our city employees, providing the great services we enjoy today. And you see them around town every day, police, fire, our solid waste truck drivers, streets, crews, Parks and Rec employees, there are 425 of them. So please take time to thank them for all the great work they do for us on a daily basis. Relax, don't let the hyperspeed of the modern news cycle and its social media amplification create needless anxiety, we see a lot of that today. Many of your choices, may all of your choices reflect your hopes and not your fears. And finally, as I always like to say, stay informed, stay involved, and stay in Folsom. So thank you for your attention today. Again, trying to contain a lot of great things in 20 minutes or so is difficult at best, but it is a great community that we live in and has been built well over the decades, and we promise to keep it that way in our future. So with that, as I scramble to find my agenda, after I, I think I lost it in my papers. I got it. Thank you for scrambling for the extra copy. So that concludes our scheduled presentations. Next on our agenda is business from the floor. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the council and the community on items not on this evening's agenda, and I believe we have, okay, very good. So with that, next item?
Your next item, Mr. Mayor, is your consent calendar.
Okay. And I believe we have, so item 7C, Steve, you'll be...
Yeah, it needs to be pulled, because I need to recuse from that item. But I'll move A, B, D, and E unless others need to be pulled.
Okay.
And I just wanted to make one comment on A, but otherwise I'll second.
Okay. So item A, there?
Just the only comment...
Just the only comment on A, as I'm looking forward to having Bill Hedo serve. He's worked for the Department of Corrections for a long time and also been a longtime Folsom resident, so I'm sure he'll do a wonderful job there.
Very good. Okay, so with that, please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Miklos?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Morin.
Yes, and I'll go ahead and move item 7C.
Wait, wait, I gotta leave the room first.
I don't think, no.
And I will second it.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna wait. So in, as Steve described last time, so this is some actions that are being taken on some property that is very near his place of business. So there's a potential conflict of interest that our city attorney is always very good at pointing out. So that is the reason for Steve's recusal on this item. So that item has been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Morin.
Yes, and so with that, we can have Steve join us, rejoin us, and as he's coming back into the room here, we will move on to our city manager reports. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. To begin by saying, there are a lot of great cities in the nation. I've visited some, we probably all have our favorites, maybe second favorites, Folsom being our most favorite. So it is with great pride that I just found out today that we have been named by Apartment List the number 17 best city to raise a family in the nation. And so just to add-
I'm sorry, what was the publication?
Apartment List.
Cool.
We've been ranked by Apartment List before. We have also been ranked by many others, and so in addition to the accolades that you mentioned earlier, number 17 best in the nation to go along with our number one best in the state. And given that I've visited a number of really great cities, to even be in the esteem of those and in the eye of all of the different organizations out there that rate cities, it's a very proud moment for us and I guess a testament to the great partnership that we have with the community, with the schools, with the businesses, and the dedication of all 400 and change city employees that work every day to support the values that you instill in us on behalf of your constituents. So great news for us and another great accolade to pile on to years' worth of accolades for the city.
Are we keeping track of all that?
We are keeping track of that.
And we should maybe think about putting it on the website.
You bet we are.
Okay.
And one of the things that I think is a major contributor to the recognition that we get is our desire to work very closely with the community and our availability to do so. And along those lines, this coming Thursday, January 26, our Police Chief Cynthia Renaud is hosting another coffee with a cop, and so you can meet with her and hear about all the great things that are going on in the community and how the Police Department is contributing to those. And that'll be at Nicholson's Music Cafe at 632 East Bidwell Street at 6:00 PM, and you can visit the Police Department's website at www.folsom.ca.us for more information should you need it. Also, just to add one more note of things that are going on at our public library, this past weekend, we hosted the 20th anniversary of Harry Potter. So for you Potter fans out there, if you weren't at the library this weekend, you missed a shindig. It was a fantastic event, probably the most, the biggest-attended event that we've had at our library ever. And so that was very good. And not to overshadow what's going on this, on Friday, February 3, where the library will look at the life of William Liedisdorf, who all of you know was very instrumental in the founding of Folsom, not necessarily the founding, but he was the original property owner of the Rio de los Americanos Land Grant way back in the 1800s. And so you can hear a little bit more about one of the fathers of this area, William Alexander Liedisdorf, and that'll be at the library again on February 3. Doors open at 9:45. It'll be, the meeting will be held in the library meeting room from 10 to 11 a.m. And hope to see you all there. And with that, good evening.
Thank you very much, Everett. Let's see, Ernie, why don't we see what's on your mind today?
Well, it's pretty quiet, actually. I'm trying to get in my house out of the Christmas mode and trying to meet my March normal date that I get done. My neighbors tell me-
I'm gonna keep my fingers crossed that you have it done before Easter this year.
I try, I'm trying. So it's good. Went up to a high school basketball game, we've been spoiled over the years, and they're in a rebuilding mode, but they're good. They try hard, and the crowd was fantastic. The spirit between the kids from both schools, Wood Creek is probably one of the best teams in the area, the number-two rated. And they got a big kid, kicks 11, and makes a difference in basketball. But Folsom played well, they tried, and they were shorthanded. But I encourage everybody to keep going out, they got a few more games in February at home, and then the playoffs come up. Scouting program is still going big. All of us are getting requests to support scouts, and that's a tremendous effort. It's a pleasure to have so many in this town and be asked to join them, you know, and talk to them. So we got a lot going on and gonna come on for 2017, and I think it's gonna be a great year for everybody, so I say thank you.
Great, thank you, Ernie. Steve?
No, I'll just say good evening.
All right, very good. Roger?
I'll say good evening, but actually, one thing is I'm shocked and amazed at how many events Ernie Sheldon attends, especially with youth programs. I was, I got to flip the coin for the Crosstown Cup for the Junior Varsity for Bulldogs versus Vista, and Ernie was there. And you go to the other one, the girls and the guys, Ernie was there. So it was pretty funny. I just want to commend him for how much he is active in the community, and I appreciate everyone coming out. Thanks.
Well, very well said, Roger. Carrie?
Okay, first, I wanted to, I haven't seen Dave in a while since he got promoted, so congratulations, Dave. Go Engineers! The annual Rotary Hands Crab Feed is coming up in the next, it's not this weekend, next weekend. That's a really good crab feed, if you haven't gone, it's, they hold it at St. John's in the church hall. If anybody's interested in that, those tickets are available, they're $45, and you can contact me if you're interested. My email's on the city's website, as is my phone number. It's finally dried off just a little bit, but we're hoping that that's not the end of the rain season for this year. So I don't know that there's a lot of leaves left, but if there's any leaves in the drains near your house, then please clean them, and please be very, very careful. When it is raining, I saw a lot of accidents last week. Hydroplaning is a very dangerous thing, it's where your wheels are not actually in contact with the road because they're on the water. It'll cause you to slide and make it much more difficult to stop. So if it's raining really hard, please slow down. There is a new exhibit at the Arts and Senior Center, and unfortunately, I had something to do on the night that it opened, so I wasn't able to go. Everett, do you remember what it is?
It's red.
Black, white, and red all over.
Black, white, and red all over. It's a quilt display, so it's very, very nice.
Okay, okay. Well, speaking of quilts, that was my next item. The Quilt and Fiber Show is, that's taking place the weekend of the 3rd, 4th, and 5th. So that Friday, I think, is the day that they set up. So if staff could once again be judicious about parking away from the building, we get a lot of older folks that attend that, and if the weather is bad, then it's particularly difficult for them to get in and out of the building. And that's also, that's a pretty big show on a regional basis for the folks that are into quilt and that sort of thing. And I guess if you're not interested in the Super Bowl, you could spend Sunday there. Another business that I meant to mention to you after the event on Thursday, Prairie City Landing is another new senior through assisted and memory care living facility that will be opening to their tenants that same weekend, the weekend of the 4th. That's a welcome addition in town, they've joined the chamber, they've already been active in sponsoring golf tournaments and a number of different events. The Historical Society Golf Tournament is going to be held in April. I don't have the date off the top of my head, but again, you can either feel free to contact me or call the Historical Society, and they will be happy to get you an application. I actually volunteered at that event last year, it was a really, really fun event. And as golf tournaments go, the city's golf tournament is actually going, the mayor's cup is gonna be a week early this year, so people that are interested in that should get in touch with the Parks and Rec Department. I don't know that the applications are out there yet, but that tournament always sells out. So if you're interested, contact the Parks and Rec Department. And with that, I will say goodnight, that's all I have. Thanks for a great job tonight on the State of the-
Thank you very much, Carrie.
Although the governor, when he did the State of the State today, did the words to this land is your land, and so I thought maybe you could hum a few bars.
No, I'm gonna pass. I've said and hummed enough, so. Just a couple of things, I did have an opportunity, Ernie mentioned scouting in the community, and had the pleasure of hosting some members, some scouts from Troop 1855, of which a couple are in the audience there. So they asked some great questions, and they always, they always get you thinking about things, so it's, it was a pleasure hosting them, and best of luck in their scouting futures. And then lastly, is in the spirit of thanking city employees, please pass along my thanks to all our folks who were involved in various storm response over the past three or four weeks. I know you mobilized a lot of folks, I think there was probably more than a couple of times where we had people who weren't normally working overnight, were working overnight and keeping, keeping the water flowing and the trees off, the wires and the roadway. So, and I know that, you know, it just kept coming, so it wasn't just something that took a day or two. So everybody, and I know that was a lot of different folks stepping up to take care of that stuff, so please pass along the thanks of the city council for all the great work that they conducted during those tough weather times. So with that, again, thanks, everybody, for your attention during the State of the City, and we are adjourned at 7, or 12 minutes after the hour of 7:00 p.m. Meeting adjourned.
Had to be a record.